Good evening then, welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, February 13. And please, enroll, call all those present. Please join with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes from last meeting to approve.
I move to approve the January 23, 2018 school board meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have a new green agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And celebrations. We have Chartwell's Dining Service, Katie Buzette, and Travis Price. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for having us. Superintendent Brown, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, we're just here to do a little bit of a food service program update and talk about where we're at year-to-date so far. For breakfast meals, we're up significantly. Travis will share kind of a highlight of something that they are piloting at the junior senior high, but we're up about eighty-four meals per day for breakfast, year-on-year across all categories. Lunch is just a touch below where we were at last year. We're about twelve meals under per day. For à la carte counts, where the dollars are the same year-on-year. And for adult meals, they're down just a touch. So we're going to look at what we can see to do to increase that participation. And catering is up year-on-year. Those numbers are looking pretty good. So, in relation to cost for the food service program, product cost is down to plan. Travis and Stephanie and the team have done a really good job of managing product cost. Paper is up just a touch, but it's not anything that's out of line that we don't feel we can manage through till the end of the year. Labor cost is down significantly, due in large part to that, of course, we had Jackie leave last year at the end of the school year, and we ran without a director for about four-plus months. So over the summer, summer feeding time and into the beginning of the school year, Stephanie Lang-Hauffer stepped up and we worked together with Patty and supported the program until we were able to find Travis. So Travis started in October. And the direct costs that we have are actually also down to plan two, which is really good to see. That is due a little bit in relation to that some of the money that we've spent this year tied to the proposal from, you know, that, from last year. So, the program highlights, Travis, do you want to go ahead with those?
Hi, I'm Travis. Thank you for having us here tonight. So to recap my first three months here on the job, some things that we have done. We did some new signage refresh at the high school, and we do have some new signage coming in for the elementary school that we'll be placing in the cafeteria for there. We did some tasting promos. The first one we did was a Power Bowl where the kids got to sample a rice, chicken, black bean, corn bowl with some sauce on it. And then we did a chicken dipity promotion last month, which was different dips, dipping sauces that the students could try with their chicken nuggets and stuff that we had that day. And then we did start a breakfast pilot the last two weeks of December, where we started a grab-and-go breakfast down in the high school area in the Commons to see if that would increase our breakfast numbers at the high school. And what we did see from the month of November, we did 3,405 meals served. And then in January, we did a total of 4,129 for an increase of 724 meals. And it was the same amount of serving days of nineteen, which gave us thirty-eight more kids per day since we've been doing the program. So we have rolled out that, we're going to do that the rest of the school year and see where that takes us. Hopefully, we can still increase the numbers on that. Other things that we've been doing is evaluate the menus to increase and make sure we maintain our participation levels right now. Some of the things that we're looking at is our high-hit items that we serve that we know we get the highest numbers on. We're trying to put those on the menu more often to increase our participation that way. Monthly staff trainings on safety issues, safety topics that we do monthly. We've been keeping that up to date and moving forward with that. There are also a chat session where we just get together and chat about a certain topic for the month. So we've been doing that monthly. And then this week is inclusion week at the school. And something that I did this week, yesterday, we did a little candy bar that had an inspiration note on the candy bar. And today was thank you cards to each of our staff members. So that's the things that I have been able to accomplish so far in the first three months here.
And then when we look at what's next for the program for this spring, we're of course looking to, again, the proposal commitments. We do educational enrichment, there's a scholarship, and there's also a teacher grant. So we'll start the process for that. And then we're also looking at continuing to build on the signage refresh that, you know, he's doing at both sites and maybe getting some smallwares and some small pieces of equipment. And then for, from a budget perspective, you know, we'll look at where we're going to end up for the year and then also put together the paid lunch equity tool when it comes out from MDE so that we know what we need to do in relation to meal prices for next year. So that's kind of where we're at year-to-date. Are there any questions?
Staffing-wise, how are you doing with staffing or substitutes or?
It's a little bit of a challenge, definitely, Joe. Do you want to share with that, Travis? The shorter hour positions, I think we have one open at each site?
Yep. Currently, we do have one three-hour position open at each site. I do have it posted online. We did an ad in the paper a month ago to get, try to get more applications. I've seen a few. I do have one that I'm trying to onboard currently that I got approval for today. So hopefully, I can get her in-house ASAP. But we are looking, I am looking for subs as well. I think I have four subpositions posted so that we have more people to draw from when we do have people out on sick leave or whatever the issue may be that we have more options to call and fill in shifts that way.
Have you considered talking to the school district at all, or the two buildings, about a shared position of food service slash paraprofessional, food service slash title aid? Because we're finding the same thing, you know. Here in Martin County, we have a 2.2 percent unemployment rate, which is one of the lowest in the country. And the labor shortage is getting tighter and tighter. Do you find that too at Perkins?
Sometimes.
Okay. I just wonder if that's something we might sit down and talk about sometime to see if we can't match some schedules.
Absolutely. That would be great.
That would make pretty good sense because the part-time stuff is so hit and miss to get that consistent person that's willing to come in for just a little bit. If you could co-mingle the two and add up to more hours. He's a smart guy.
There's a reason he's in the position he's in, right? So, absolutely, we'd love to chat about that.
Any other recommendations for us?
I don't have any at this time now.
I think, I think Travis is, you know, it was, we had quite, it was a short conversation today, but a really valuable conversation because it's been interesting to see over the last three months, you know, how he's, you know, he's learning the program and already doing analysis of things like, you know, you know, St. Paul and supporting them, you know, and his two sites individually. A lot of times, people will look at a district as a whole and just look at their meal numbers, like I reported today. And it is really important to delve in and be looking at the individual sites and making sure that we're doing that piece too. So I think he's doing a really nice job with that and working with, working with the team to make sure that, you know, that they feel supported and it's cohesive.
Any big changes between Travis working at the hospital versus working at the school?
Yes, there has been. A whole lot different in regulations on what people can eat, cannot eat. I've learned at the schools, you know, it's a lot more whole grains and making sure you're following and making sure the students take what they have to take to meet the food programs. So that's been a big difference.
You're saying we're healthier than the high school, than the hospital?
I believe so.
Okay. That's off the record, by the way.
As the Sentinel reporters.
No comment.
Got to be very careful.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, I have a number of things. First of all, the enrollment report just came out. And we are now serving 1,684 students. And compare that to where we were just a year ago this time. We were at 1,672, so we're at 1,684. So we're still up 12 students from what we were a year ago. We're down just a few students from the last time our school board met. And that's mainly because of the semester change. What that sometimes happens with the high school. Some students either go to another school district or some may even graduate early. But we're down six students at the high school, or five students at the high school and I think one student at the elementary. But otherwise, our enrollment's very steady and we're very pleased about that. If you go to your pink sheet, the school calendar, just a couple of highlights. First of all, on Thursday of this week, the school board is also going to be meeting at the high school for a breakfast with the students. And at 7:30, the, there's a high school leadership team that wants to meet with the board. And so they're going to be, I think, meeting with Principal Niss first and then coming up to the cafeteria. What's not on the agenda, we, at 8:30 to 10, there's going to be an elementary science meeting with the two principals, myself. And Mrs. Green is going to join us on that. We're going to have a discussion about kind of the future, kind of the direction, just a brainstorming session about what we need to do to enhance the science curriculum at the elementary next year. Later on that day on Thursday is an operations committee meeting, and we'll talk a little bit more. Julie's going to be briefing us tonight on an update of Lincoln School. And then there's also a policy and curriculum committee meeting later on that day at 4:30. Looking ahead at March 14, there's going to be a tour of Lincoln School. And we're going to have two tours available for the public and for the, mainly for school, six of the school districts. There's going to be a 2:00 tour and a 5:00 tour. And if any board member can make it to Lincoln School, there will be board members from the other five school districts that make up Southern Plains. And that's an important thing to do.
And the purpose of that?
Purpose of that is to take a look at the current condition of Lincoln School. There'll be architects and Kraus Anderson will be on-site to be able to do a walkthrough about what it's going to take to rehab Lincoln School, to bring it back to life. And Julie's going to brief us more later on with her report about the future use of Lincoln School as the next Southern Plains Educational Cooperative building and moving the Winnebago site and the administrative offices to Lincoln. Okay? And then just want to, you may have read and seen in the paper, the Emma Kahler has been named the Region Two AAA Award winner. And just a couple of dates coming up, on March 9, she'll be receiving her plaque and award at the Class AA Girls Basketball Championship Game at Mankato State University. And then on March 24 is when they, they'll be naming the state AAA Award winners. And that would be on March 24 at the state boys' basketball tournament. If Emma does win, she gets a $1,000 scholarship that's repetitive for four years. And so it's quite a huge honor. I actually drove Emma and her mother up to the interview in Mankato a week or so ago. And it was delightful to see her and to see the competition. And she's a great representative of our school.
Very much so.
Yeah. The AAA Award winner, for those folks that are listening on the radio right now, the, or on TV, that's, it takes a very special skill of an individual high school student to have academic skills, athletic skills, and fine arts skills. And she's one of our top students and very appreciative of her. Let's see, what else is going on? Just an update on the Saturday Welding Academy. I was in town on Saturday and I went and took a number of photographs at the Saturday Welding Academy. This is the second time that we've done this on Saturday. We do have 20 students taking the Saturday welding class. We have four adults. We have 11 students from Blue Earth. We have three students from Gredehnhuntley East Chain, and we have two Fairmont students. And we have, did I mention we have four adults? Okay, four adults. And there are five, and five of the students that are taking the class are female, 15 are male. It's a very interesting class. And if you ever run on Saturday from 8 till noon, I would encourage you just to stop into the high school and, and take a 15 or 20-minute tour. It's really fascinating that the students are having a good time and they're very talented. We talked about the Family Fun Fair. CER wanted to remind me that we do have a rural equity learning community opportunity that's coming up. And I'm going to send that out to the board. If anybody's interested in serving on that, it's a group that Region 9 is putting on. And they're trying to get a delegation of eight people from seven different school districts, Wasika, St. James, St. Peter, New Ulm, Fairmont Lake Crystal, and Montgomery, La Center, Lonsdale. And this is a group of people that would be coming together for a total of eight evenings up in Mankato. And it's really to have, it's kind of like a super-town meeting to talk about the rural equity part of this part of the state. So if anybody's interested in that, I have a form here to fill out. And that's it for my report. But I also have a school board recognition week. And let me find that. I have a proclamation to read. You ready for that?
I am.
Okay, here we go. Proclamation, whereas Fairmont Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community. And whereas Fairmont Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. And whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. And whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws. And whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that Fairmont Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Fairmont Area School Board proclaiming February 19 to February 23, 2018, a school board recognition week. And I have signed that. I do have certificates for everyone. So I'm going to come around and say hi.
Well, I wanted to thank you, Joe, for putting the letter in the newspaper today. It was very much appreciated. Thank you for the kind words.
Well, those are easy words to write about and easy words to tell the community about because we do have a wonderful school board. I'm going to start over here. Danielle? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lieutenant?
Thank you, sir.
Which side?
You trying to get pictures?
You're getting my good, you're getting my good side here.
Thank you. Okay, Joe?
I'm finished.
You're done.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, we're on to financial business. Donations, Dan?
Yes, we have two donations here, an appendix A and an appendix B. First, I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Hockey Association donated $450 to the Food Service Angel Fund. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number two?
Appendix B, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Thrive and Financial donated STEM materials for Fairmont Elementary School, donated, are valued at $250. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports and bills, Julie?
Yes. In your packet, you have a copy of the financial reports for this meeting. We have the January 2018 Treasurer's Report. There's nothing really on there I need to bring your attention to or anything. But very standard on the opposite, opposite side is the expenditure report, as you can see at the top of the page. And each account and the breakdown of the adopted budget, the monthly expenditures, where we're at year-to-date, and then the percentage of budget that is spent. And we're pretty much right on track with that. At the bottom of the page is transfers wires for January 19 to February 8. And there's really nothing to bring your attention to there. And then we have the bills for February 13. And just want a couple here. This one is check number 6,752, AEP Connections. Are you in the zone? It's a registration for a conference. Carly Sonic and Robin Armitage, they attended, and that was February 6th and 7th. And on the top of the, or top of my page, it isn't, you guys all have a different printout than I, than I have, so. Check number 6,763. This was to Chris Carlson. This was repair, kind of not really repair, repair work was done on power lines. And because of that chance of the crop yield being affected with that, it is just kind of a payment back and that, so. And so that was to Chris for that, and that was for $829. Fairmont Photo Press, 6,772. This is the listening session, the first one we had on, at Graffiti Corner. That was held January 20, 8 to 10. And that's just for the advertisement that was in the paper. 6,805, the check is made out to Redwood Lodge, Redwood Falls. This was for speech students who, there were 19 of the students that participated, January 26 and 27. And one more. Staybridge Suites, this one is check number 6,814. This was for a congressional debate. Six students participated, and that was December 1st and 2nd, 1st and 2nd in 2017. That was for $447, so. Otherwise, everything else is there. Any questions that I can answer or direct to someone?
Do you know the Teachers on Call payment? Was that something we do?
Monthly?
Monthly? Okay.
You know, it changes depending on absences and having to fill in and that, so.
We actually get a quarterly report from Teachers on Call. And we track that pretty closely in the office, and our sub-costs are actually down from previous years. Part of that is the flexible scheduling that the high school faculty are doing.
Any other questions? If not, then I would make a motion to approve the January 2018 Treasurer's Report, wire transfers for January 19 to February 2nd, February 8, and the payment of the February 13, 2013, 2018 bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Julie. No old business, new business? Policies, Nicole?
Yes, the Policy Committee met and we reviewed the following policies. Number 102, 205, 401, 409, 417, and 491. Those are contained in Appendix C through H. Most of the changes that were made were just recommendations from MSBA with regards to grammar or technical things. Nothing really that actually changes the policy. One policy that we as a board pay very close attention to is the policy on open meetings and closed meetings. We're very mindful, or try to be very mindful of the laws that exist and how we're affected by them and when we can meet and can't meet and the notifications that we have to abide by to meet state law. And that is policy number 205. And the other policies basically are, as I said before, they're all just basically with regards to MSBA suggestions, rewording of a few things, but nothing really that changes the meaning of them. Any questions?
I just see the revision is 2015, then. Does that get changed to 2018, then, when we, we make it official that we approve it? Or, okay.
Yep.
Just curious.
Some of these, we have to review every three years, and some of them are annually. And I think three years is the most, isn't it, that we're supposed to go? So we are trying to be very current, and Superintendent Brown is doing a good job of keeping us current on these. We appreciate that.
On task?
Yes.
Judy?
Judy's keeping me on task.
So with that, I move to approve the policies as were presented in Appendix C through H.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Nicole. And budget resolution, Dan?
Yes, this is an annual procedure that we go through and every district goes through every year. In Appendix I, I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore for the 2018-19 school year. Whereas the financial condition of the school district could potentially dictate that school board reduce expenditures. And whereas there could be potential for reduction in student enrollment, lack of sufficient funding, and an increase in costs. And whereas it could potentially be necessary for the district to determine which licensed staff members' contracts should be terminated and not renewed, and which licensed staff members may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number 2752, as follows, that the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and to reduce expenditures should be their reduction in enrollment, lack of sufficient funding, or increase in costs, and to make recommendations to the school board that there be, should there be a need for discontinuance or curtailment of programs or positions.
I'll second the resolution.
Okay, roll call. Danielle?
Aye.
Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dan.
Just want to make it very clear to the public that this is something that we do every year. And we're very fortunate that the district's in great shape financially and we have a great group of faculty. And I see some of our young faculty out in the audience today. And I just want to let them know that their positions are safe and sound.
But it's, it's just to protect ourselves should something occur that we would need to make reductions. I mean, we, we don't have anything planned right now. I mean, we have gone into some years, looking into the next, in the future years, as in needing to make those reductions. Sadly, that we need to do that. And it's not that we have to, but it's our job to our taxpayers that we make our ends meet. And, you know, we've worked hard to keep our budget healthy and, you know, continue so. And hopefully, we won't need to, but it's just by law, we need to do that.
Right. And remembering too, that 85% of our funding comes from the state legislature. The legislature goes back into session on February 20 of this month. And you never really know what the legislature's going to do. But we're hoping that they keep their promises to us and that off we go. You're right. How many times have we heard the phrase, "We have to live within our means"? And we, and we do. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Personnel, employment, Julie?
Yes. Principal Niss is recommending that Keisha Glenke be hired as a long-term substitute special education teacher at the high school. This is to replace another instructor while she's on medical leave. Keisha's a recent graduate of Grand Canyon University. She holds a BS degree in elementary education and special education. She did do her student teaching at Gredehnhuntley East Chain Schools. So I'll make a motion to approve the employment of Keisha Glenke as a long-term substitute special education teacher at a salary of BA Step 1, effective February 26, 2018, to May 4, 2018, until the regular teacher returns.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number two?
Let me do that one too. Okay. I can hardly read it in here. Principal Tredo is recommended that Denise Allen be hired as a long-term substitute junior high math teacher to replace Ashley Shivel while on medical leave. Denise has experience working as a paraprofessional at Martin County West and just recently completed her teaching degree. So with that, I would make- I would make a motion to approve the employment of Denise Allen as a long-term substitute math teacher at a salary BA Step 1 effective on or about February 24, 2018, through April 6, 2018, until the regular teacher returns.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Julie. Board Committee reports, Nicole?
Curriculum Committee met February 9th with the English Language Arts Department, specifically their Chair, Sarah Goodall. Principal Ness, Superintendent Brown, Rufus, and I were in attendance. The discussion was with regards to 12th grade English curriculum and what we currently require and what possibly could be required. According to state law, there are four years of English Language Arts that need to be completed to graduate from a high school in Minnesota. And previously, in Fairmont, seniors had the opportunity to take a language arts class, a traditional language arts class, one semester, and then a speech class the second semester, or take the college-in-the-school classes, or a college-in-the-school speech class. And the request was made that if students would like to, if they can take, instead of taking a speech class their senior year, if they so chose, they could take a full year of English Language Arts. And the discussion at the committee level was that by the time they're seniors, they probably know what their future paths are going to be and which class they think would be most beneficial to them in regards to their post-secondary education or career or future studies. And so we decided as a committee that that would be all right. So the offerings for 12th grade English, students can choose from any of the following: English 12 for one semester, English 12 for a second semester, speech, or if they qualify, they can take college-in-the-school composition, college-in-the-school literature, or college-in-the-school speech. So essentially, there are six options for students to take for that 12th grade credit. Also, previously, speech was only offered to 12th graders. However, we do know that there are some students who are in younger grades that have requested in the past to be able to take speech prior to their senior year, and we decided as a committee that that would be fine. I think speech is going to be offered from 10th through 12th grade, and college-in-the-school, we're seeing if that can be offered to 11th graders for the college-in-the, 10th graders for the college-in-the-school speech. If not, that class will be offered only for 11th and 12th graders. So. We didn't change the requirements, we just opened up the options.
Any questions? Okay, and CER?
Southern Plains.
Oh, yeah, right.
Dark.
The wrong initials. Superintendent Brown, do you have a copy of this? Do I need to send you one?
I have one.
You have one, so, okay.
Yes.
We did have a meeting on February 5th, and the main thing I'm going to talk about tonight is new and exciting. Superintendent Brown referred to it before as in his superintendent notes, but Southern Plains Educational Cooperative is looking at purchasing the Lincoln School and using that as the educational base, or whatever you want to say, for their, all their programs. You may remember that, you know, was that three years ago, we went to Winnebago. Blue Earth has done, you know, they had, you know, given us the, not really given us, but we renting the building, but the building is in need of more repairs. And as the days go by, there just is more and more. So the exciting thing is that we are looking at, as the Southern Plains, purchasing the Lincoln School building. Sarah Middlestad, who is the director, has been in contact with the owner, the current owner, who I'm not sure, it's not the same one that we sold it to, it's been sold again. And we're looking at, you know, purchasing that building back. The good news is, we got some word from the Minnesota Department of Education that we will be able to use levy dollars, at least levy dollars, for this, even if we previously had owned the building, because there was just some, we just need to make sure that we keep after that. We did get it in writing, so we know that, but because Fairmont used to own the building, there is, you know, just that risk that we wouldn't be able to use that money. But we would have to purchase it. The exciting thing also would be is that with this plan is that if we go through, add an addition to the building, we would be able to probably house all of the programs that are currently at Winnebago, along with the administrative offices of Southern Plains. And so that would save us money for Southern Plains as well, because we're currently paying an off-site piece. And so kind of very similar to what Fairmont Area Schools did, is, you know, condense our buildings and that. So you can go through here, read through this, a little bit on the history, things about what the recommendation is, what the renovation would be, where the funding would come from. We have, Southern Plains has increased the number of meetings that we'll be having. Also, there's a timeline in here that's detailed out. Superintendent Brown also brought forth, and a tour is available on March 14th. That's available from 2 o'clock or 5 o'clock, and that's open for all members of all districts of our Southern Plains Cooperative. And like I said, I just really think it's very exciting for Fairmont to come bring that back to us into our school district, make a use for this building, which I believe has been sitting empty.
For over a year.
For over a year, I know, since the preschool left there. And so it'll be, you know, good to have something back up in that neighborhood, have students and that again in the school, and like I said, make use of an empty building in Fairmont, because, you know, nobody likes it. We all know what happens to empty buildings when they sit empty, is they can slowly deteriorate and go to waste, so. Okay? Any questions on this? I mean, we'll be, more and more updates will be coming, and we'll talk more about it. It'll become, you know, once we get into the architects and stuff and kind of find the designing and stuff, you know, there'll be more information as it comes forth, so.
So on Wednesday, the March 14th, when we're meeting to look at the building, and we've had some time to digest this, will there be question and answering appropriately at that?
And, you know, Julie, you remind me too, we actually have the tax incidents, that's not in this packet, but I will scan that and send it out to all the board. It's pretty modest. If you look on the one-page, Dell, the, I think it's page 7, the proposal by Southern Plains is that each district would do a lease levy, which is property taxes. And the share is based 70% on your enrollment of the district, and 30% is on the use each of the Southern Plains. And that would change, you know, every year, based on what type of students that, or the number of students that we send to the specialized programs. And because we are the larger district, our share would be $260. I do remember that about a $250,000 home, I think it adds about $72 per year.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were. It wasn't, I mean, yes, it is going to add to the taxes. I am not going to say it's not going to. But for the, you know, getting a building in use again in our district, getting, you know...
Well, it's going to be cheaper to operate, too, because, you know, we spend a lot of money transporting students from all over the six districts into Winnebago and then back home again. We have paraprofessionals that are on specialized transportation facilities that we put on buses to pick up kids here and then transport over there. We're paying for that transportation. And I think it's going to be great. The total cost, it's estimated, it's going to be about $10.6 million to rehab the building. But I've always said that if a tornado hit Fairmont and there's only one building left standing, it would be Lincoln. It is just a solid building. And I think it's going to be great for the north side of town to have this. It's centrally located in terms of where the kids come from.
Right.
And, but it is going to take the collaborative effort of all six boards to approve this.
All six boards, all six boards have to agree to this.
Right. I understand, talked to Dr. Middlestad today, United South Central has already approved it.
Oh, good.
And so we'll continue to get more information of the board, but we will bring this to the next Operations Committee meeting, which is already on Thursday, I believe. And so I'll be getting some more information, and I'll share that with the whole board.
Julie, in addition to the Alternative Learning Center, what other programs are there?
Oh, I...
Well, there's the Autism Program, there's the Level 4 Emotionally-Heavily Disturbed Program, there's...
And how many, how many students come from Fairmont? You'd like in those programs?
Do you have, I don't have the exact numbers.
We do, we have that report.
It's in here?
No, it's in a different report, but I'll get that to you.
I mean, for the number of students, I mean, it's a small number of students that are in, you know, compared to the rest of our district, but it is a very important, you know, program for those students that are taking part in that, so.
And I know there's been some discussions about trying to provide some district opportunities for the students at the ALC, you know, especially in the vocational program.
That is correct. In fact, that's actually in this report, and that's a real, that's really neat to think about, because, you know, many of the students, especially the students that are in the area learning center, we think they would really benefit by taking some of our vocational classes, whether it's during the regular school day, or if we're successful on legislation to be able to find, get state funding for the after-school programs Saturday. And in fact, we sent out 17 letters today to the Governor, the Commissioner of Education, and 15 key legislators to keep promoting this legislative change. And I did hear from my local state representative, and Albert Lee, today, that she is getting ready to put the bill in to get us vocational funding for extended classes taught outside the school day. I think we have a great shot at getting that passed. So you're right, having the facility here in town, close to our high school, I think it's going to be great for the kids.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Is this document available to the public?
It sure can be.
Through Southern Plains, or?
Right. We can make it available, too. I can make copies.
Do that, or on the website?
We can put it on the website.
Yeah, I'm sure some people want to read that.
I'll get the tax incidents on there, too, because that's important. People want to see how much it's going to cost. Very good.
Okay, Joe, CER?
Well, yeah, I was at the CER, I have one little document I'm going to distribute. You're talking about vocational. We had a report from this company, this is a group, this is a lady, actually, based out of, I think, I'm trying to think of where she's from. The lady on the right-hand side is Jolene Koch, and she has put forth money, and they weren't exactly, they said it was at least a half a million dollars they set aside. But the two ladies that presented to the CER, the third lady to the left, and her name is Rebecca Flizer, and the second person to the right-hand side, Kristy Courier. What they're doing is that they're working with school districts, and they're doing it right now with New Ulm, but they were very impressed with what we're doing with our vocational programs. And what they do is that they actually will finance a group of people to come in and take, it's kind of a try-and-buy. They'll come and take just maybe 10 or 12 hours of vocational class in a school to learn a little bit about welding, or a little bit about construction, or a little bit about small engines, and to kind of whet the whistle to get people back into the skilled workforce area. With our programs, our programs are much more extensive than what they have, but they are very interested in working with us and promoting our, promoting the skilled labor workforce and to get more people excited and trained. And so we're going to be working with these people a little bit in the future. No details yet on how that's going to happen, but they have some money available, and we have the facilities, and so it's like the Reese's Peanut Butter Cup. We have to put the chocolate and the peanut butter together to make a good product. It's almost like that, Doc. Maybe it's not exactly like that.
So where's this outfit from?
They're out of, well, New Ulm is where this lady's from, yeah.
Okay.
So, that's it.
So, are we going to have, is this, or just cross out?
We didn't, we didn't meet.
Yeah, we didn't do that. That was canceled, yep.
Okay, and then SDCC?
Yep, SDCC met yesterday afternoon. One of the topics we discussed was the calendar for the next school year, and it is almost completely done. I think there's a couple of tweaks they need to make at the cabinet meeting tomorrow, and then the full calendar should be presented at the next board meeting for our approval. They're also noted that they're beginning to take a look at the renewal for the science curriculum. The state has pushed it back, so technically it'll be about two years before we know for sure what all the standards are and what curriculum we should purchase to meet those standards, but there is an expectation that the state of Minnesota will follow the national science standards. It's not set in stone yet, but that's what we are expecting. And they also discussed the fact that the art curriculum is now being reviewed, and we're making sure that our standards meet that, and that if we need to, we can make some adjustments with that curriculum. I think that's it. Those are the highlights.
The calendar, is that ready to, I mean, is it following any certain school, I mean, I'm thinking of Southern Plains, when they want to have kind of a unified calendar. I mean, do we have anything in that?
Unified with other districts?
With other districts, so like our Southern Plains are?
I don't think so. I think in the past it's been discussed, but it's hard to...
It's hard to do.
Every district has their priorities, and it's hard to meet in the middle with those, so far. Doesn't mean it can't be done.
It's a goal, I think we should work for it. The committee was very good. We had somebody from the elementary, high school, and special education that served on the committee, and we went through 15 different iterations, I would think. And what we tried to do for the community is, we tried to keep it so that when we had classes for students, that students were in school K-12, instead of having the elementary on and the high school off, and the high school on and the elementary off, because we heard some from, we heard some concerns from parents that that was hard. You know, when you, when you put your elementary kids out of school for conferences or whatever, and the high school kids have school, the daycare issue becomes a huge issue. And so we really tried to keep that simplified. We did respect the elementary. It feels very strongly about having back-to-school conferences the first two days of school and not be teaching. The high school, though, do have classes those first two days. And, but it's a pretty good calendar. It's, we, it's always a compromise. It's always interesting to get, you know, it's always interesting to me, you have four or five people working on something, and it's sometimes very challenging. And then you remember that Congress has 535 people trying to pass a law, and you get an appreciation for how hard it is for Congress to get together when sometimes it's tough for us to get five people on the same page. But I think we're close.
Yeah, I think one thing that can be depended on is we won't start before Labor Day. We just won't, it's the law. And the second that we will have graduation, the first Sunday in June, so. And we'll know the details next board meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.